Khodzo, batzoa di. Ke tsukuluma kapi di, oja ya vijini ya. Erikelebo e, motzozo na kufu manan, desa bakasenana. Hati koba kahore tikweza petra petra di ntsatsanga tabane dibuita fitile mona tsileba kili di nisere ma kuko abona. Ile ya wakho kwa kaba ka, o lebo he la lo ananela sina serepa pa siri inzi. Wakai ba di ze se boka sabo futa na ojeinana. Impa, gina rilesi sitheo. Tjoloka si muisi katangofita mona si kata obua horake. Mwale, zangoba kili osachila ha nklaba tu. Ha holo ba tu ilo kufu manan horake ba ame, ile ba tu ilo keni kiri artisti. Ho kamele na holo inana ekeli di because ntswe keni shoka ya nokora keni maju luthia kona akaronda province. Sena di di challenge isitza nga da. Eri koko kwa horake, na ko e kana nefa pa kuhelileke horake. Haki zinala kapa kaleza kamo kwa tala e juak. Horake e bato, tuarelo. Hora ba tu wa kono hotola, mwale zao na kaka karich. Toko pe tuarelo habe, ba gensha ho fiklalada. Obane zedi ntsadi ntsanesi ba ka dibuhini le juabo. Mka e raba ka, eneki ba ka ho pepe sakayo, kafaneke hokakaki seso kayo. Kide intervention ya de minister, out of this oja na ebinyani. Masibituwa uka ba ofe bleeding from de minister ekota ma kamo kwa tala juan. E juan holo re e rifi keli mona e di province. Because na mukomo, haki ala initial program. Ho kamele horake nifi keli mona di province oja na mona etika di province. Mibogo na esafristi, rekotsa ba oja na etekela kama kwa tala ife. Ema habe, gina ya di contracting, telo orake inda yata ra mospechila kai trola kha ido kana kha se sa teli la ma kufu. Rifu manan horake, selection ha yusu. Ha ebe fe ho ba tu ba anga ofela because nyaneke. Osha ebe, ekagahu lohutu repetition ya di artisti. Ma roto na di di artisti ni, telo orake nja di kono kufu manan platform. Kabaka la oba ya neke, basa kwayana nale baba mbaba tu ilo orake ba kaha rekaku ya neke ba kani politiki. So rego, ntswe uka bu ya na bayo. E bolaya e, tyanjalo ya na le koreke, ya re bolaya esadi artisti. Because if like, resa tule platform, ya horake rekanza ta masibituwa ro na kapole fa pa la sa kono re le ritus. Reko fana lo keni masibituwa ro na ofela fela strate mona hana moyan tente lo. E wosakati lo iba masibiti kapo sabi moylemo roho. So re koko kwa hule taba ya horake, na ko yuru orake ma fa pa kani tende tabana kapo ya ni di contracting. Hava lika horake e, hava fe di artisti ka ofela eh chance. Kapo hau swaga du odishi ni, kapo hau swaga du odishi ni. Kuhono hotsa ba horake, be left fair to everyone. Se mukhi tue ba tu mani, nde mani, wosatema kide kreti lefini se misu nte tilo. Gina mukomo, hakanana ke ba ka kesuha yeta, havi ye ni di kahokla habe kali bo.
Tjolaki ni kitse pisi te, onale matso kamo, hayo. Sbussisu, I think you can start to reply. And any one of your team who wants to also add. Before Sbussisu, I've been hiding this for a very long time. Nonali lucky welcome ona, na le me me si pakela. I can't introduce that deliberately, or le kono obua ha nklafi freely. We are very grateful and honored that you are here. It's been my envy from my young age. Unfortunately, I get to hear when I'm now this age. I've always looked up to you and has influenced many of things I did in life. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm taking advantage on the chair so I can exploit the platform and say whatever I want. Thank you very much mama, and thank you for honoring us. We are so lucky and we are proud of you very much. Not sure you want to speak now or you can go ahead. Can you source the mic, ski? Oh, no, no. We request you to go there because we want to capture you in a camera. We are live on social media, so for some reason we must just break. No, 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 I'm not that old, I accept. But she's one person I've loved for the rest of my life. Thanks, Sbussisu.
Thank you. Dumelang, Legay, Rirona. Thank you, thank you, thank you Chairperson. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the legislature for making sure that it goes to all the provinces and hear the views of the public about the bills. And secondly, I'd like to thank the Department of Trade and Industry Competition for a tremendous work they've done in a Performers' Protection Bill. Though the bill still needs to be amended, it is out here to be amended. I just pray that we all understand that this bill is out here to be amended. Our contribution means a lot to signing of this bill to an act. The bill is not yet an act, it is to be amended. But the most unfortunate thing is that artists are not out there to protect their rights. People that are out there are the same exploiters of artists. I am talking about the so-called stakeholders of the industry? Many, the managers, agent, record companies, and all collecting societies? Who get the lion's share from the works that they collect from users? And the other thing is that most artists do not even understand how many entities that are out there benefiting from their works. We are facing a dilemma in the creative fraternity as a whole. Artists don't earn enough. Artists do a lot of work. Artists are the main stakeholders of the industry because they create. They create the work. And they are not workers, they are owners of the work. Because creativity, it is something that we are born with. It is something that is within us, of which it is our intellectual property. My voice, my vocal cords is my own intellectual property. And I do not understand how does a person that goes out and pay a session fees and pay the studio owns the copyright? I still find it very difficult that a record company, an internationally owned record company owns a copyright of Mama Margarita Ngangala who sings Ibegile. Hamba begile, sugurkalanawonye, kethisa mfonjini, mainkayomindawonye. Dinhanyewe, defunugusela. How can an internationally owned record company own that copyright? How can a white man own that copyright? Because that is an African song that belongs to an African child. That's an African voice that belongs to an African mama. How is it owned by an internationally owned record company? And a white man who signed? Mama Margarita Ngangala was, "I'm gonna tell you this story." Because most of you don't know the history of this industry. Most of you young people do not understand how many and how much artists are being exploited. And the digital space is doing it more than the previous system. It is exploiting more artists. Even the young people are getting more exploited than we were. That is why most of the young people, they cannot stand the fire. They end up killing themselves. Some of them end up taking drugs because they cannot stand the fire. So it is high time that we get up and do things on our own. It is high time as creative artists to unite. We need to unite and speak in one voice and make sure that we own the intellectual property. If our government can do us a favor and open a black-owned record company structure, a black-owned publishing structure. Because most of these structures are internationally owned and white-owned. And some of the black people who are there are the ones who child with the white people. And a black child stays poor forever in the industry. Okay, but let me say, the Performers' Protection Bill is structured in a way that it covers some of the things that I've spoken about. The fair use and the fair dealing, I do not understand. Because it has been utilized by the so-called executives in the industry. I don't understand and I don't even want to talk about it. But the only thing that I am talking about is our right as performers. We also are entitled to own a share of the copyright. Because when we go to the studio, the record companies, they pay for the studio. They don't pay for our voices, we don't get paid for recording songs. But in the end, they own the copyright. How does that happen? So it is high time that our government make sure that he looks after the needs of a black artist. Thank you very much.
Uwutu svoli li story? Yeah, you're telling us that story? No, you allowed to. I just wanted to allow you to sit down after such powerful comments and input. Indeed, we are lucky and we get to be exposed. I wish majority of artists, mumpes, could have been here, they could attend this. For some reason, they think it's something below their fame. This is alive, it's their life, it's their welfare. They get to determine what must happen in their industry. Someone else is going to do it, not an artist. There's no two about what we are talking about. That's why we don't, for some unknown reason, project ourselves as if we know. We don't. We're dealing with the bill, we need to get educated, we need to get informed. And you are taking us through that, for that we are grateful. That's why we're saying this is a parliament of the people. We are just representing. Without you, we are nothing. And this is what we mean. So you wanted to input, I can allow you and then allow. Uzopendula later, my brother. Tella juwene, kisyo, I'm gonna allow it and then that in tuka. And then you'll reply after. After his reply, if you still feel something has not been properly expressed, you can still raise it. You are allowed to do so. You can as well take the posture there so that we capture it. Okay, we can wait. Uzokuluma na. Yes, please. You can wait. Se vumelo mam. Ah, wea paya, se funo se, se funa lando, funa lando mesara, lando ya social media.
Sorry, there are two things that I wish that this bill can amend. Performers' Tribunal. If the Performers' Tribunal can be established. I know that there is a Copyright Tribunal that has been there and it is gathering dust. But we need Performers' Tribunal. A Performers' Tribunal that will be set up like a housing tribunal. Where when a performer is exploited by record companies, managers, and agents, he can go to a tribunal and view his complaint. One. Secondly, women are the most exploited being in the industry. And in these bills, I haven't heard anything that talks about women protection from being exploited by male who are dominating the industry. This industry is male-dominated from whichever side. And as women, we always have to be submissive. And most and unfortunately, I am not one of those submissive women. And I find myself being sabotaged by all the stakeholders in the creative arts fraternity because I speak my mind and I tell things as they are. And I don't want that to happen to the young ones. You know, because there are some young people who communicate with me and who ask me, "Mama mercy, how can we be protected from these men who always ask us to go to bed for us to be famous?" You know, and most and unfortunately, I cannot help it if there is no law to catch them. So, mudimu wa khodzo kia kupatli, or a government warona, please meet our needs halfway and protect us as women from the male who dominate our industry, even all the structures that are there. You know, the structures, the cifsas, the wart-wat, the wart-wat, are all male-dominated. If you look at them, the structures are set to exploit, they're exploited. So if our government can just bear with us, please, help us. Women are dying poor, women are dying with broken hearts. Kali bo.
Hello, Dumelang, baabona. Yes, I'm not speaking on decade of a legacy like the music legend Mercy Pakela. But I have been involved in the music industry for over eight years now. I've been working with an independent record label based in Johannesburg. Artist-led record label, black-led record label. And I was so co-founded an NGO that is about supporting artists. My name is Kyla, Kyla McNulty. And I was the co-founded an NGO that is about supporting artists. And by supporting artists, therefore, helping develop the music industry. And in the last few years, I've been working with NGO umbrella advocacy group called Recreate. And initially, I started by just helping to host workshops where we did copyright education because artists and musicians don't often know about copyrights in the country and they also didn't know about copyright reform happening. And Recreate tries to facilitate community involvement, stakeholder involvement. And is a group that represents creators and users. So it's extremely interesting actually because you've got organizations like Blind South Africa who for example recently took the government to the High Court and the Constitutional Court about the unconstitutionality of the previous act, which is from 1978, predates the internet by five years. And as was mentioned, they were discriminated against, they didn't have access to education. So even if you buy a book as a blind person, you have to, you know, request that you can translate it into something that is readable for yourself. And they have many other obstacles. We also have SADU, South Africa's biggest democratic teachers' union. And they obviously have interest in accessibility to education. For example, the 1978 Act, you can't even, you know, photocopy a paragraph from a textbook without breaking the law. So technically, when you're doing that, you're breaking the law. So there's a lot of really, really outdated laws. And then also they represent creatives. So for example, I was working with a lot of people in the music industry. The South African Guild of Actors is part of it. There's filmmakers, photographers, many, many different groups, all part of this advocacy group pushing for copyright reform. And I've learnt a lot along the way. I've been involved in many of these dialogues and just trying to learn as much as I can. And I'm definitely at the point where I agree with, you know, the group and Recreate that firstly, copyright reform is extremely urgent. There's livelihoods at stake, there's access to education and information. You know, there's just so much at stake and I don't know if everyone knows, but this bill has been in the making for, actually, you could even look at it as almost two decades. So it really is time. And there has been a lot of public consultation. The bill even passed through parliament and went to the president's desk. And all the president needed to do was sign it. But there was a lot of lobbying by different organizations, intermediaries, as well as a lot of corporations that coming from the US and the UK that often exploit our industry and exploit our artists. For example, not having to pay actors royalties or collecting societies having an issue with having to be regulated. So there has been a lot of pushback. And we do think that a lot of the pushback is from intermediaries because they don't want the status quo to change. They don't want something that is going to say that you have to pay fair royalties or say that artists who are locked into exploitative contracts should have a means to renegotiate their contract. For example, there's still artists locked into apartheid era contracts. Some of the contracts today even reflect apartheid era dynamics where, as Mercy was saying, you know, sometimes they don't even give you the studio, but they somehow end up with the copyright. Or maybe they just give you a few minutes in the studio and now they own everything. So there really is a lot of unfist that needs to be addressed, a lot more protection that we need to offer creatives, a lot more ability for users to access. Especially in a country like South Africa where that is a huge issue. So we can't just have a capitalist idea of, oh, we need to support copyright owners and make sure they can make as much money as they want to. Because what happens with that is you end up in a country like South Africa where they push the prices up because they want to sell to the minority instead of making it accessible for the majority. So this bill introduces penalties for doing that or incentives for not doing that. So we think it addresses a lot of things and everything that needs to be done. And there's a few things that can be done and done through regulations. So for example, one of the things that was taken out that we were quite disappointed was the prospective royalties on past contracts. So for example, as I mentioned, actors don't get, aren't legally mandated to get royalties. So for example, you could have an actor, Nambita is supposed to be here, hopefully she can speak more to this. But an actor won't be getting royalties for an international film like, for example, what's that film that was in the Rugby World Cup? But all the international actors are busy getting royalties for that film. And it's even a South African story. So those are the type of things that need to be addressed. And then I just want to speak a little bit to fair use. Because I feel like I am very familiar with it now. Not only to the experience of it as being in the music industry, but also to the dates and the discussions around it. And I definitely think there's a lot of fear mongering. There's a lot of misinformation about fair use. And a lot of misunderstanding about the purpose and the necessity of fair use. So for example, there's a lot of studies that show that fair use actually boosts the creative economy. Because creativity is not simple. It's not, you can't just say, for example, ban any replication or anything that might sound like something else. That's not how creativity works. Things are connected to each other. Creativity builds on creativity. We do obviously need to regulate. And for example, in the US, they use fair use. And you'll see many examples where people will take somebody to court because they even feel like the rhyme scheme is too similar. Never mind the lyrics or the, you know, the actual notes or the chords. They can say rhyme scheme's too similar. And you can argue that in a court. And you could come out, you know, you could come out positive. And I think creativity needs that adaptability because it's not, you can't just put a blanket thing on creativity. Sometimes there's gonna be a bit of gray area in terms of, is this infringement? Is this not infringement? And again, in the US, they also have, they're great example because there actually isn't that many fair use cases. Copyright cases are less than 1% and fair use cases are 0.004, something like that. So the US isn't dying from fair use being operational, no. It's got the best creative economy in the world. So fair use introduces that balance where it says, okay, you can argue fair use for education, for research and stuff, but it also, you can argue it for the creative economy. You can, should be able to make parodies and all this stuff. But there's fairness tests. And the fairness test are, have you infringed on somebody's ability to earn an income? How much of the proportion have you taken? What is the purpose of what you're using it for? And this test to say whether it's fair. And that also works for innovation. So you can't really have law and say, okay, well, we've predicted every possible thing that could happen in the world. No, that's not how the world works, especially with technology. So fairness, fair use is adaptable. It says that, okay, you can apply fair use to innovation and say, okay, is this fair or not? And looking at AI, you know, it's a great example of, there's this innovation that's gonna completely revolutionize industries. And you need an adaptable legislation that's able to move with the times. Because we can't count ourselves out of AI, we would be setting ourselves back. In fact, creatives will probably be some of the most people using AI. But we do need to figure out what does that mean. And you know, we actually have been having recent discussions in collaboration with Mercy as one and just really talking to our creative community and saying, well, what does this mean for you? And we do actually support an amendment. Usually, we don't support amendments because we feel like amendments are excuses to prolong it, the process. Whereas a lot of what people are complaining about can be done, dealt with in regulations and maybe later. But we do feel that we would support an amendment that says that only human creativity can be copyrighted. Simply because the gray area of, you know, where it could go is a bit uncertain. And we do want creatives to feel like their economic future is safeguarded. So we do support an amendment like that based off of, you know, the feedback we've gotten from our creative communities as well as the lawyers like ICT Africa who we've consulted with. So we do support that amendment. But we do think fair use is still the right legislation for this age because we have to be adaptable. We have to be able to move with the times. And we cannot predict what's gonna happen in the next five years. And as we can see, legislation takes up to 20 or more years. So we need adaptable legislation and we need fair and balanced legislation. And we think the Copyright Amendment Bill does a really, really great job of that. And we support it as Recreate and its many affiliate organizations. And we support it as Recreate and its many affiliate organizations. And I just want to say before I end, Nambita Umpoana is supposed to be joining us. She had to run to the pharmacy for an emergency. So I'm really hoping she comes before you end. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Ndalutuka. And then.
Thank you very much, Chairperson. And thank you to all who are present here today. At this very, very important moment of looking into one of those very, very key industry. May I start off, Chairperson, by saying, first of all, how grateful we are to have Nancy around as one of the people who have been in this industry for some time. How do we wish that more artists from the Free State should have been here today? Not that one is looking down upon the contributions that have been made by other people. My reason being that people who have been in this industry for a long time know the pains they have gone through. And even with us as the citizens of this province or even of South Africa have seen what happened to some of the eight artists that this country has ever produced. Many of them passed on following in the category of being called paupers. And that is painful. To think of all the people who provided the pleasure, the happiness to all the people in this country to die like that. It would have been very, very useful, Chairperson, if we had these established artists being present here today. I'm thinking now of artists across the board, poets, actors, writers, singers, you name it, they should have been here today. And how much, Chairperson, do I wish that this type of information should be part of our schooling programs? Our children at the schools should be informed because a person with talent of doing whatever, whether writing or singing or writing poetry, should get into that field knowing precisely what it entails. Things like contracts, I mean, it sounds very easy to talk of a contract. How many of our artists know what a contract entails? And what type of contract should they go into to benefit themselves and not benefit the middleman? So Chairperson, it's really a great pity, but at the same time, I must say to Nancy and her friend, thank you for being present here today because you speak from the road we have traveled. I'll stop at that. But from what the other people have also said is very, very true. Our artists in this country, many are times, are taken for granted. I thank you, Chairperson.
Chairperson, if you have billion, say, there is a more, rather than who pays, we, rather than what I give you, but I'm not, say, I think, my, I'm not, my, 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 my pays, my, 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 my,
No. Thank you, Messara. We're also grateful to welcome Usisu Nambita Umpluan. She's amongst us. We told you are coming, so we delayed the meeting. See, Akwela Guti, you can say something to us, but Akwela, you must stand there because we want to capture on the mic, we want to capture on our social media so that we can break. We've been breaking Usisu Messi back here. We're doing it now again. Thank you very much.
I guess I have a microphone. Do me lang. Like I bias. Kiting, kiting, kiting. Hey, echo, you know, oh, okay. I come a lot of Nambita Umpluan. Don't be a smart little one. Oh, it's like a man. Oh, Zulu, oh, it's hanging. A panic as he, since he's a flathead, and I can't do that. From Bala Mbongo, he had no, and he listened. That's a my belly, oh, come on, oh, it's like a ballet. In my, I came in, Mona, be la Luna. Ki, came here, Haraluna, I'm a artist, he's one of them. And I don't know, good luck, I don't know, the artist, Mona, how many artists did you have? In my, but what do you think, Mona? Keep on that beneficial study billion. But then, in fact, redeem. It's all about them. Redeem, redeem, redeem. If it's one, if it's ten, if it's ten thousand, hi, it's a moon failure, redeem. And we understand the importance of this bill. I'm going to ask you to do something. Then I guess I, guess I table we is, oh, more, I love it. Kind of, or, well, I'm gonna, we prefer to speak. And just have it recorded soon. In my, in order for this bill to be effective, it's a little bit of a parliament. Let me leave her on a reartist. Ring all your submission to the legislature, to parliament, it's a little bit, so that the bill can become law. Now, I know what I've just told you is a migraine. I get it. Ne? It was so. Eh eh. Let me tell you, I just drove for three hours from Johannesburg to here. I could tell what going, that's when I realized where the disc on my back had slipped out again. So it's sitting on a nerve. So there isn't really late. Kids were disc him. Man, I believe it's tough, but I came in. That's pain. Writing a letter that is two paragraphs long to benefit your future, that's privilege. What I tell it? Oh. Let me give you an example of what this bill is going to do to you or for you when a artist. Now, I can add to what legislation, but yeah, yeah, the bill must pass. When I would have, why must this bill be passed? Why you pull a movie television series, ya shaka Zulu? Boom, 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 boom. Come on now. Yeah, I can't, I know. Henry Kelly was the lead, one Mona shaka Zulu, got his muscles, got his twelve pack. One Mona, ne? There is not a human being in the world who does not know that man. And how about now, I got shaka Zulu? I'm telling you today, how about it's a any movie, any television series, how about now, I got shaka? They look at Henry Kelly, Marie, grab at the shaka, washaka. I'm a bunny, he made his step. Now that movie was made how many decades ago? All of North America, let's say, we're in a good little Canada. I was watching that every year, every year in Canada. Nah, now, if the bill, eh, yeah, performance protection amendment bill, nearly denka na kuya, Henry Kelly, boom, 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 boom. Every time. Kill the beletz, kill the Canada, kill shit, kill televisioning, kill shit, kill the movies in. He would be getting paid today. What's that guy, it's in, I think, he would still be getting paid if bill was, this bill was the law. Do you understand? Or you hold a hat on? Do we, we want cash in? What is this? So, fine, when I, oh, I'm a little uncomfortable, cash in. Every time I bapala, I'm sure my mother, one round, they fail, that's fine. But I never have, I will not have a man at ten round. But I never want to have a man a hundred round. Every time I bapala, ho shit, if I think, ho shit, if I think. Now, this is. I go. How's that? Billy, and I, I was so. Get a group, I'm a business. Well, I'm going all. One paragraph, two paragraphs, I support the copyright amendment bill. I support the performance protection amendment bill. But I never, Henry Kelly, I don't know, who I'm a pill, I go in. But if the bill was in place, that I'm a kuya shaka Zulu, I pay. They'd be living in a mansion right now, driving Rolls Royce. That should be you. That should be you. Now, I'm not like company, it's a night, but like, no, it doesn't work with, oh, this law does not work with our business model. In other words, oh, nah, as in South Africa, we must change our laws to suit when I, it's what, it's what I, I. Just to make you happy. Eh eh. Get haru, namu. Get haru, namu. Government, yeah, who, nah, it's a, my, who, nah. So if government, yeah, how? It's like a way. Bang, well, let it go. I'm a Jew, it's a, I'm a, the copyright amendment bill into law. You want the performance protection amendment bill into law? Who, nah, you are, Lee. Ning? 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 Can I, boy?
Yo, sisin Nambit. See, I'm boy. That's why we track the meeting. There's value into that. I, I'm not sure, my brother, I don't want to be in your position. After this legend, you still have to reply because there were questions asked, we put may. Did you get a good data? Was a bono, Pumanja?
Well, I don't know, I'm a palm, you see, I don't turn it, God, but, but, thank you for that input from the honorable members and also the veterans within the industry and all the other views we received from everyone within this hall. I think from our side, they painted a picture of what's happening in the industry, which talks to the issues that I presented today to say, this is what we are trying to fix and this is what we are trying to ensure that there's protection. To say, this is what we are trying to fix and this is what we are trying to, to ensure that there's protection eh for creatives within the industry and so that the issues that have been raised today, we can deal with them comprehensively. Eh, we have noted from our side, the issue of fair use, there are some very competing views on that issue. Eh, we've noted that. And also the issue of the contracts is coming out strongly. Eh, the powers of the minister to prescribe those particular contracts eh within the industry. And also an issue that's coming now eh to our table eh, the issue of the school curriculum. To actually include some of these issues talking to intellectual property. Eh, we do take into account that is an intergovernmental issue eh, which we will note in our report as well for eh our principles to take further. Eh, the issue of the performance tribunal which was raised eh to talk to the issue where we are having disputes eh for contracts that you've signed within that space. Eh, which the B said eh, they have been omitted eh, we'll take that into consideration eh in our report. Eh, the issue relating to the structures that are within the industry eh that are not transformed and there's no representation for women. And also there's no protection for women in general within the industry eh, something that we have noted as well. Eh, particularly the agency, when it comes to us making this bill's law, it's been noted eh, we are moving at a speed to ensure that we support our legislatures and our, our principles within the DTIC eh, to ensure that eh these bills can reach the table of the president for him to make an informed decision going forward. Eh, the other omissions that were alluded to eh relate to the issue of royalties for past contracts. And also for infringement in terms of eh eh human creativity in that space there. So all those issues that I've raised now, things that we have noted for our report and we raised to, to answer for them to note. And also eh question was asked, how, how will this particular bill or when it becomes an act, how will it reach eh the people on the ground? It's very important for us, as you know that eh, once it's passing to law, we do the regulations from our side. The implementing agency, namely eh the company, the Intellectual Property Commission eh, will definitely have to work with the national and also the provincial arts and culture departments to ensure that eh these bills are implemented, the act by will be implemented effectively and fully and the information that's reach eh the, the stakeholders that are affected. And also from our side, it's part of our mandate to do education and awareness. Once it becomes law, to ensure that the message everyone gets it and you know, when we talk about copyright and performance protection, what is it that you are talking about? Without you having to require services of a learned person to explain these issues to you. Eh, Chapez, in those few words of just lesson eh, thank you for this opportunity and thank you for the inputs that we received. I think I'll end here for now. Thanks.
As Ussis. Eh, you are present. You are present eh. Eh, take guts to speak after such powerful eh people. Still can have something to say. Look, I'm a politician in my, in my eye. I talk too much, I know that for sure. But I can't, I, I'm intimidated by my surroundings. Look, these people are people I looked up to, they were my role model. And eh, you are role models of others. And this is what we must keep building and propelling, moving forward. Otherwise, that's how you build a nation. Eh, otherwise you emulate different role models. I'm, I'm going to make an example which is nasty. Kupalencharele, batu ba wo. But eh. Batu ababe ya marukimu. Aba ta ma ba bi li marukimu. Eh. Eh, America unale trongu bitwa New York president, the biggest in the world. Ten years back, it used to have close to four hundred and fifty thousand inmates. The biggest in the world. Ewu hololo fita, I think Haiti, the country here in Africa. Now, en bapa ra duru, bapa ra livai, livai kadi limo, ya para trongu, lunali raipate la mo, funan, barri ya para trongu mo. Now, bar. Nakunze taponase. Aba ba ta ita antuzi tapon. Banawa ta kunu buwa, ore, valitisa. Arhao uli read, uno wey brukimu na, baba nsewa tiba ra, hushapu na. Ruhue enama ntsibu. Ba ba twa 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 trongu, ba ko pana le na stokade, ubi li marukimu, banana ngakawi. So we end up taking such role model. Because our platform does not create a space for us to appreciate good role models that we have amongst them. And that's why I said to you, culture is the basis and the foundation of a nation. And that's the space you operate in. So, we are very grateful and now I am excited because I have people I look up to. Kabonaluna he umtalile memberata parliamentary tashewaka. And then eh, it's true, you can still submit in writing. Eh, ufiela kadi tools ame. You can submit in writing, I'm going to give you three emails. Eh. One ki zinkle, m@fsl.gov.za. Zinkle is, Z capital letter, I-N-H-L-E-M@fsl.gov.za. En wiki pabalo. At fs.gov.za. En wiki khatato. Dot nkiyane, seventy-seven at gmail dot com. Khatato, K capital letter, G-N-T-H-A-T-S-O. Dot N-K-E-A-N-E, seven-seven at gmail dot com. So, rekangola until the two eh, sa me, rekana la submita kadi ime limo. And eh, so, you can then tell us what to do. You can then give us advice what to do, so that we go there, we do what you need us to do. As I said earlier, we, we, we not necessarily clued up about the industry. We, we, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, seeing it from a distance, we don't know the intricacies. You know it best, you live it. Eh, so you can tell us and then we'll, we'll do what you want. But eh, I'm not sure there's anything else after, after everything we have said eh. It's you, is there anyone else again? It's you. Okay, ndi nipi number, in nombor. One, two, three, four, five, six, six. Tela niye pa. Omunye, please go mo. Omunye, please go mo. Feta amundad, libo meka speed, feta, feta, feta. Aditu le di shota di okfe. Aditu le di shota di okfe. Okay, kota ongakala mta kada.
Eh, Guti, molweni. Ikama lamdom uaya nda kota. Eh, di vela apifristate. Di shalebunfonte. I, I just want to discuss about that so that you, you understand eh, whatever I'll be making input around this. I'm not going to do any repetition, Chapez. I think your committee knows my face now, they are only struggling with my name, but they will get it. I just want to mention, Guti, there's, there's, there's a concern that we only have Department of Arts and Culture in the province present here. We don't have Department of Distia present here. Which is one of the concerns I'm raising, where I'm standing. And this department speaks to each other when it comes to this bill. Because nationally it's led by DTIC. So automatically it tells you that we need to have Distia present here. Eh, I just wanted to say that eh so that you understand, Chapez. And number two, it's to say, Chapez eh, we love those, we love and appreciate those who lived before us. And we need to learn from them. We don't need to repeat the same mistake that they have done. And that's then why I'm standing and, and, and say to you, Chapez. We have eight countries that have rejected fair use. The only country that is using fair use in Africa, where we are, where we understand exactly what is happening with our, our creative space. It's only Ghana, go and look Ghana. How, yeah, you are intimidating me, Chapez, I mean being intimidated. Eh, the reason, the reason why I'm. So, so eh, I, 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 I would like to be given a space to make my input. Okay. So, Chapez, that, that is the reason and the example was made about the US. The contracts that were done during apartheid, we go, we, we know about that research. Most of the companies were from US. And which is the same problem that Mama Messi has raised. To say, they did not benefit our artists. It did not benefit us as the creative sector, hence we are sitting with this crisis as we speak. So we are saying, let the tribunal court that is going to be appointed by the minister be strengthened and speak about the wrongdoings that were done by apartheid. So that if Mama Messi owns Ayachi Samategi, let her benefit from that. But if she doesn't own it, let her not benefit from it. Or let's have those different types of royalties, because we've got performing royalties, we've got mechanical, we've got needle time, we can mention them, those royalties. Because we know that some of the people that were singing those songs during apartheid, they did not write them. We know exactly, we can't just eh mention names. They were just performers, someone wrote the song and that person performed because her or his voice was suitable for that particular song. So the owner of the song must benefit eh from, from that particular royalty or a song. Eh, again, Chapez. We are, I think you have said it when you opened the meeting, but I need to say it again to say DTI is provide us with an economic research around fair use. And then, for now, we are saying, we are, we are, we are agreeing with Umamunambi to say, the bill needs to be signed. When this bill needs to be signed, there are a lot of positiveness around it. There are a lot of good things that eh, we really appreciate that our government, you are, are, are now taking this eh to us and say, guys, speak to yourself, correct yourself. But we can't be held ransom with one section that we feel it's not suitable for us. And you should check, Chapez, those who are, who are pushing for fair use. You should check, Chapez, you will decide, I don't want to lead you. You should check, those who are pushing for fair use and strategically so. I'm leaving that. Eh, I'm, I'm closing and I'll, I'll give to, to others. Thank you.
Dumelang? Good day. Um, I am Tembanitabang, I am a poet and a writer. I also coach high school learners eh, the issues surrounding art and other issues that we are not gathered here for today. Um. I'm standing here as someone who's heartbroken and artist who has lost the hope in his own craft. We've been taken up and down with no results. Both from the government and the people the government should protect us from, right? I, value South Africa for one thing. It can make beautiful laws and beautiful regulations that are able to make you believe, hori, you are really protected. But once we actually go down and check actually how the stakeholders in this industry are exploiting us, it's very painful. Most of the artists on the ground from small townships don't work, they don't have money. And those social classes are actually making it hard for us to make it through in this industry. Because it doesn't matter what type of a bill or what a law you come with. As long as the people in the ground are not catered for, it remains a problem that we should deal with. I have written a book three years ago. They tell me, the publishing house tell me two things. One, if we do self-publishing, you have to pay us twenty thousand. Two, if we do it for you, we are thinking ninety percent and you get ten percent from whatever you're gonna make from that book. It's my creative work for that matter. I haven't read the amendment bill because I haven't got time to read it, I just got it today. I'm still gonna go back and read it and submit my submissions, that one I will do. But I need to actually engage people from Department of Arts and Culture and Recreation. So that they understand the type of issues we're actually experiencing in small townships. I've been, I've won too much having, trying to find the help. Today I get told, make an amendment, come the following week or following day. You get there, no one is there, you don't get assisted. Two, I've been to Bloomingdale's, to Department of Arts and Culture. I don't find the person who's responsible for what I'm there for, I'm told he's not there. I go again with my own money, I don't work, mind you, that person is not there. In the townships, we don't even have information desk. We don't even have information desk, which will be called one by one, there's a meeting tomorrow, come, we are leaving, it is wrong. We need to, to actually engage Department of Arts and Culture and all the important and relevant stakeholders that would be able to help artists in terms of making sure that they are actually recognized and they actually paid what is due to them. Art, it is not easy. It is not easy, it takes emotions, it takes your time, your creative work. And once it's been treated as an incidental industry, it becomes a problem. We need a contributive representation. Two, we need transparency in terms of if the budgets are there, eh eh, what are they going to be used for? Because we, we perform, we don't get paid for what we actually produce. It's actually painful as an artist who doesn't work in a country that has a high unemployment rate and you still have to allow yourself to be exploited. The issue of bill is something that is a conversation on its own. And I would like to thank you for being here and opening this space of conversation. Just allow the artists to go back in their own communities, read that amendment bill and they will actually engage you on that. They are very educated, these people, and they should not be treated as a second-class citizens. We are very, very tired of always having to come here and say the same thing each and every day with no change. Let us go to the ground. Black people know, art for them, it is not just a means we use for entertainment. It's our expression, it's our stories, it's the things that we have suffered from for centuries. Even today, we are still being exploited like we are still in times of segregation, it is not okay. I just wanted to make that submission, I have no question, I just wanted to submit that it is time for transparency. Unless you want the artist to take it to the streets and that is not a threat, that is actually what is going to happen if we are still sidelined. Thank you.
Koto. Eh, ki mudibiri, mudibiri limpeje kalibito. Shahaona tabo mona watetwane, etewalan kajou kambule branch. Cause ka fela di NPO, zinti di register huaymo. They don't own my BTO, eh, eh, di NPO, zaba na di bitangka. Ti wuajena kos, kye business consultant. Honale, honale kam, NPO ekileka register galabatu, kabafalibito, libito eganavalene kabatu selga constitution. Then eh yele ita motona ota hona furo. Honale motwa sebita, libito lejana, ne, ne, vite libito lejana, halisebe diskiriya. Kila, kilao sechatalona, CIP, el si gokana ku. Kamontsa registration number antufo. Wabona ka, NPO ye na, eh, register we the following year, eh yele ita seko reg, tarete kofile plenena, eh, NPO ye na. So kiko pa, link corporate, CIPC, karal, social development, for registration, eh, di NPOs. Mchenya wobeji. Honale ntena ya for the music ne? If we register, kye o recorda music, ka computer, ka computer yak, eh, restna agreement, dore music gua gua ma. Automatically music gua gua. So, kiko pa le, le emphasize ntena information, konsantu benneli information, eh, di artiste batsebe. Labakai ta kontrakte ya two, two lines or three lines, it doesn't have to repeat ten pages or hundred pages. Halenda kontraga ya two pages, le motor recorda huayeno. Music gua na gua. Cause haule, haile rekodi le fela computing yak, automatica music gua gua ka, asim music gua ha. So kiko pa le, tedi edikinte, eh, ne, hon, man mugidula nte wate twan, honale Arts and Culture Center, kiko pa di education is so aid, eh, ne, jala ka zivoyak, destia ha ni eta last time, yona public hearing so. Enze public hearing, geshi mona tropo, eh, bisa tabo nkomisant. Kiko pa Arts and Culture ya ni tabo man wate twan, li sebiliye na, kinalkelelo re nakoe, enze kachonak, re dumel, kya group? Thank you.
Hi, brothers and sisters. My name is Jeki, Jekse de Mocheki's son. They used to call me Majeks, the son of the late Make Dino Moshane. Yesterday, I was a mastermind in Jaya Gassatan, Skoko Sakona, abusing the innocent, hijacking, stealing, never know that I would suffer, suffer the consequences of jail, pagati kwe tanyani. A pain is a price to be paid, living your quality life behind bars, oh yes, behind bars. I used to play a guitar, all gangsters used to dance, dance after me, dance be kuta kama tol. Why? Because I was no colossus, forgetting touch, in jail, prison, the real no colossus. Dumbeleang wate twa waho. Ne gibatla kye ma platformo, skipo re eh, wetza alanga li, 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 kye boso uko re. Ona, kye activisti aketide kye ex-con. Kye mona idinga, pe la kara gangsta, pe la kara trongo. Eh, kido ba mchutwane mare, kene kiko pa kye mametse me anagwarre, kiko pa le opuse mona awaske ransadi eh, di kifleboziti. Eh, kido ba mchutwane, mokitengimo. Number one, eh, why holo esatlala, eh, di artiste, eh, zidi taveni, ndidi kwanenza distrata. Eh, otowa ta taore, kye hutle, kudo du la fatse, le mona waana, wena ku baale, because kha le baalo. Haleka fela la ti sale so ma, ne, moting, ona nteni kira ta baale, ne, bitwa batu pele person. Kha roka baale ntena otung, eh, free state artist be the principal, agitsebe na di right. Eh, artiste of free state, rega biyana waana ra yeta, eh, wike ile, too much. Whatever that I'm gonna say eh, ndadebe ri tla ba ba. Ah, what? Eh. Kido fana ka, kana la ni fe, fana la yak. And then one player ona umwe yakai. Ndadeba fandir, eh, gire, batu buangamraga, kwa kiproda zitaka, out was dina, I'm an actor. Eh, kye motara daan drama holo, theater eh, le television eh, the one. In short, kiko pa fa paniele fela ona kye mangisaka. Eh, retro sae na di trong, after trong, kola gangsta. Je gi Moshane, kye an awat winner, ya national stop cry, drama festival, ene swa kote, Mafiki Northwest, representing free state, anga a best director. Alwanale, eight provinces. How ya, katu ya, lo ko pa na le, tro fitse di nse nga ta di hauta, ibile ba na ba kabapa la kato. Kiko pa ya television, kyo kido ba mchutwane. Je gi onale advert, yo tudi hola, ya ne abapa la hoyon, le popa le spinach. Je gi, how kaya? Eh, kambuzanzi magic, otoko pa na lena story so tunki pa le ho, obapa la character am tizoso. Je gi Moshane, otoko pa na lena muzanzi magic. Ab, trame niyo tunki bochoko bak, obapa la de character ya keb kaya. Je gi otoko pa na lena channel one oh seven, obapa la character ya mafia, o de fragile trust. Je gi, last year, ona abapa la, ho esiris, eh, se ba la ngani piso, la lenga shuni. Abapa la character am kababa. Je gi abapa, zama zama o de wife. Currently, je gi o de black dogo ETV. Back to, ntena ndadeba fandirana ebuwa, abuaga, the artist Makufi and Watwata. Even today, when there's Makufi, still in seke fola under development. Yes. Nga yoke la nka kuta, hundred and twenty, kapaa eighty thousand. What's ever, ndadebe, au mane kaki le senti mani, ye na, he salme bel, ye na, ambele ona, ye man, je gi man, o se ni khal man. O se net twenty thousand, o se net ten thousand, netar. Onale batuba, twelve, on stage, otoba patala bekai. Writer, when I as a writer and director, otosa loike eh, n, kien teni bua ndadeba fandir ya di two thousand, net watwata. That's why gering, agibatu, agibatu, kwa, kwa, ndadeba sotore, es di artiste, re rai ke hi, that's why gering, du la mona waaning, sena kudo di baala, kila kudo di baala kete. Artist of free state, hakke dikke bele, kahara province ya roona. Go is amsalama, ngatpicha proposal, kara official machabi, ngai picha kara official department. The very simple proposal, we reject, we reject. Eh, betla kamoto, ayuwa, no kida wa mona scandal, ayuwa, debaite ten pay. De bamzara beemon, eh, ye kete biyo eto seven hundred and mama thousand, it's painful. That's why I had to la such platforms, ufineka roka. Because we share what's ona. No. Unal documenta rota wa nka benefita South Africa, abafriste, watao i shooter. Okay? Okay. So, ntena kiba ta wekta gisa in short, eh, nenzelere bona, monta ba re bona la bona, marale zega hala re bo. So, nteni kudo ya mona, kye statement, nteze bo, in the free state tunale ma. Because lebeke langana kasa ma kha uta, ha uta, because kana, wo pele ba ha uta. Ma osa ne, ha tola di interview national, alse de boza free state, eh, oh, ma tata. Why re ba group organization, ha uta, in the free state, kapasanta re pe la kandwa omo profeta, ah, bu, eh, ah. Kwe tamsalamnyan, ona serbo ma. Ona mshima lamnyana kubuangamra, kama manke, male batu. Koi ba la li fana zora, kiproda te yak. Ona tamile wede Zimbabwe last year. Okokotini ose mona, onosnale efine, toneshina hona weto. Otla mile, it's a my production, eh, eh, ke, eh, no su nu nu. Aga submita proposal, kye mentor wa that show, which means namutu, kye, kye mentor ya hai. Le kudo di supporta, mstang weto etengi. That's why gering, leka ba la mi la waana yo, etamona waana, o re di artiste of free state bele. Etabele, kwa de tabele yentse, hadi odi artiste kamo. La wu ibiza obiza, eh, hotmana, eh, bele kadi de kantutu taluna ba. Ma ona duwa na ba na santi re, so kene gire, so gjaal. Free state artiste bele, person bo, ala show, yes, into.
Eh, eh, regle was back a, eh, mtsamishari puisa, eh, kabani kye ta follow up, eh, kino ba mtele. Eh, mtsamishari puisa no, amo le komitia ha. Eh, mona kди la ka protection be. Eh, now, equally, I would appreciate it, leha li una, eh, jala ka government, kapaga no kota la ke tuamola, le departmente in their absencei, la handa debe reality monana, mari, in their absencei. Eh, you also need to protect us. Tuen datemshana ntsa ebuwa monana, eh, eh, the former SG eh, eh, ndatero da, eh, 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 as the free state has, eh, we, we really appreciate those who came before us and those who have made strides in this industry. But the mistake that the free state has always been doing, or the politicians in the free state that they have always been doing, is to think that when someone from Haute, in particular, not these other provinces, but Haute in particular, they think those people, they make sense more than any other artist in the province. Hence, the, the, the speaker, sinisikata kuwa monana, ore, aga ita proposal, before ibe eh, ab, ab, I submit, but with the same concept, hamutwa ha uta, afika abua into that. Kapaa yu tu ya tu officially, obobitu hamutwa ha uta, ah, kha tu bua hu yo. You find out ore, ki ona if man expression eh, be future de fetah. The portfolio committee, there was a time in free state when there was a, a, a film training of some sort. Someone from Haute came out that man, that budget, are trainer, the free state has fulfilled me. Go into the archives, go and look on what happened to that particular man. But I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to give you a picture, as to say, eh, we, we acknowledge the, the, the role that Mamamisi F played and so forth, and both Nambiita, and fortunate, fortunate enough, some of us, we had an eh opportunity to get into discussions, political discussions of the sector with them, and we know that they can make so much contribution. But the question that I want to ask to the panel is that, this process, it's happening throughout the country. Why so much interest in the free state? That is the question that the, this house must ask themselves. And we, we find ourselves as, as the free state on the issue of eh fair use, as to say, no, we don't have a problem, but until eh such a time when eh the department eh brings a feasibility study or maybe eh, 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 research around the issue of fair use, we agree as the free state has. But these people who are coming from Haute, they strongly feel that they are going to influence us on discussion that should be discussed amongst ourselves as the free state has. Yes, this is the national issue eh that affects the, the artists across the board. But why so much interest in the free state? So I, I just wanted to plead with the table, as to say, please also protect us as the free state has, so that we don't find ourselves having to deal with issues, eh, te, 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 wote, mtsamishana, mtsamishana, kwa kwa kato, sahore no, they are not being recognized and so forth. So that is the input that I just wanted to make, Chairperson.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Thomas Manabato, I'm from Udindales Res in Kudano. Eh, I want to say thank you very much for creating such a beautiful platform like this one, for us to come and do eh engagements with you. Eh, I'm not gonna be long, but I just want to raise some few questions, particularly on the copyright eh bill. Eh, we've got a very, very big problem, I, I call it a big elephant in the room, ya USB. This thing ya USB, kiko pa, let's check it, because onkamsele tuha o, onalo, ona o, etenka budgete, and then someone o wa onka ka USB. Onale batu bache san, be CD, taba tu badi, badi regisa strate, and the police are doing absolutely nothing guy ona tu, they know, ore, you cannot sell eh, eh DVD, eh we copy le, or USB, onale mussele tuha motuka mo. So let's talk to the police agencies, ba be involved, motwa regisa be CD strate man, ba motwa, aski ra etuela fe land, motwa tuan tuwa tuwa, even motwa ngamusele tuha kaka stick, without permission yak, ha tuwa o. Please, let's do that, it's very important. Another issue, kye, the issue of, of, of cultural desk, we have been the same problem, retudula renale, the very same problem, because we don't have a cultural desk, ose morlente. I know you know nothing about this industry, you are just a politician, we know better than you. But if we have cultural desk from local government to national, ma tata swa kasi be lo ona going forward, and then is kava a kaida deployment, no. If the real artiste batwa understand this industry, if the o na di artiste batwa duti mo, banku wa, bike niwa kamo, the office, a cultural desk, so that, reto hona engaja, nona kantwera understanda, because you don't know it, kuro na rezeva. So, let's go and, and as legislature, let's go and check it, kuro na, how best can we deal kataba eh, cultural desk, kwa askera itma na renale, kla kantzige na renale ona tu di. Eh, another one, kye ya... Issue ya final, eh, eh, formalization. Everyone, we be the artiste, sa ne o mona sebe takachi. How galaxa opportunity iteni kaga nyabo Makufi, motu sele artiste. Reten, na renale, the, the very same problem, because we don't know who are the real artiste, who are the genuine artiste. Because it cannot be fair, ore, we have, I'm sorry, I will make an example ka Makufi, kye wileka yana o, but kila etamsalaka yo. Eh, Makufi atla, wa going to perform, I've been rehearsing since o goa janawak, Makufi akokto, otrola la samoani, eh, le ne, omonke do, oktawala ono, le na, I want to go to Makufi, wabana gatu la. So we need to know through your office, we need to know who are the genuine artiste, but wherever kita on, these are the full-time artiste, ba practice each and every day. Because ona, some of us, we practice, some of us, we went to school for this thing. So, agito computer, le motwa lo ren, ha ye, eten tenana, we yeta part time, ra talala retretene, kaba ba ngata rasa te na wetala. So kesele zadin toze lo ren, katsan se kudu du ma zona, kri di she eh, eh. Another thing, we need to also check, I don't love television, like itatela theater, but it's painful, because my nephew o, olabona some of the production leki yenze, ya school, and then she saw eh little ones, baling, eh, jinyaya, atla ona, ramalome, I want to be on stage, le na ka actor, I said, no. Ah, o gua bufo, why are you saying no, gering, no, this thing's not for you, because I know this industry, how brutal it is. Kero duipu manao actor, and you are a female. Ra ta la rekretele, reba ba ngata rasa te wana weta la. So ki zedi ndadintoze lo ren, kwanse kududu matu ona, re share eti. Another thing, we need to also check, I don't love television, like ita te la theater o, but it's painful because my nephew o, olabona some of the production leki yenze ya school, and then she saw a little once, baling, eh, jinyaya, atla ona ramalome, I want to be on stage lenaka actor, I said no. Ah, o gwafo, why are you saying no, kere no, this thing is not for you, because I know this industry, how brutal it is. Ki rotu ipuma na o actor, and you are a female, we know the challenges guy known, the challenges that it be in this industry. Odu ipuma na weta antwena, auge teta antwena omata ti. So agi ba twen tore, ba na ba ba nyinyana ba na li interest ya weta antwi, rebele luto ololo la o ba, ba twi, because retotoa, they, they must be generation to generation, that comes to be in the, to the, to this industry. So make it easy for young people, for rabata industry, skira ba luto ololo la o ba ke. Because it, it, hara cheke fe la ko television, ko televisioni, if a femalei ikava lewa ana, along the line, ba hona omunsa, fe la la, ba tu omunsa, o, no, distepa sto line, ba hona motuwa, ha ona mola o ba protecta ore, ki me tuwa nta luta antwata bo me, kama rana wa huke hap, tu ge ro dam si. Ma haoka epken pe u to toke, ki me teniti, me uile me teniti, u tohuka hap. So ki kala ki out of mano ore, if you fall pregnant olo kuan me story, ba toroke, ikahona ore sebe leza, recontinue akaya nte leje. Haile za halanga, ifu kai ipuma na o lebutati omujo, u toho story, ba ba ngata ba ba bo ni ba twi. So we need to also check that, re share bele ono ona, re protecta ba tuwa bo me tuang in the film industry. Another thing ha pe kwanse ngre share be, kuhore. How gaina into a television industry? Okaala, haos o kroshla fon na, axo ka ike shaya televisioni. But agi gala ike shaya for the first time, ona nnto, onale eh, first time, haoka la shaya. O shaya, o damilo tuwa manu, buga, ike buga yeta mi uwi manu for the first time. And then kama rana o, itse, damile nyuluwe fellow, we ya buga, because we also know it, experience ya counter, the qualifications ya counter. But damile rete, truly the agencies, sa ru, because if reta the platform o te so, casting agencies, DDC, koko fe la hatu ona, it misi te kuta la ma, ba haoka la, those people, reba invite lebona eto ba part time, so that ba hona ba le vwe, di man twena, because ki bo ona ba tuwa nangli, listi ya ba tuwa te ba ona, ki bo man ba tuipuma na o, ba ba soka for ba lo ek. I don't know if I'm making sense on that one. Eh, eh, oha, eh, re kanale ona lem problem. Ki abatu, we lo ren o sa ni, we ipuma na e lo re, for a theater background. Eh, reba toba, we, we, we normally do after three months, o ye mina otelele haosana msebe eti, after four months, five months o corner, otlashla elas, production o tulisubmitted proposal, leba da ya araba. Ki kupa, we cheke, these regulations ya, how best we do this one? Let me make an example, pack offs engashu ya ka, ilo performa ko pack offs, ki once of thing, ager. Ki tuwa ba toba ba la hulika pa, ma deke nyana ra ba matatiya ma haoka ba for, depending on contract tarona di. Ki re kupa, the institutions amfutu o jo, they must cover those things, ba ye te video, haba keta wye ya te video. Ba inke this thing, ba submit o go di cinema, so that ika generate the royalties for ba tuwa theater. Because if re ya mo, otosubmita play ba le for period of five days or three days, then it's over. O ye meha o tuema for the next six months, seven months, o ye musnanexentretala. But if that production, e lo re neba ba la pack offs kapo market theater, issue duwe etiwa DVD, ya nguwe esatmi tuwa, eh, go di cinemas, iha ona o share be la, ki ba tuwa ba, iha ona generate the royalties for the theater practitioners. Thank you so much.
Sanbonana, Ika Maun Klasikisi, eh, from the recording industry of South Africa. Benye genkulume che, eh, in fact, songi zinto ebengfunuku zisho, se wasi she la bo ayanda. And I think, alright, angegen suga Haute, we will try as influence, singa geaswa abantuwa se Free State. And that's why the sharing is jet but angegen kulume namshanch. Godwa into engfunuku yish, is important, because let the pay tefay use, ikale u dan, asazi kamga ti god. Okbalegi ne is the act itself, if one looks at section thirteen of the current act, it allows for exceptions to be made through regulations by the minister. So in a sense, if we move into AI and we move into other uses that have not been foreseen by the legislation, the previous draft that of the Copyright Act had foreseen those things. So those that are arguing about fair use, it is only because che, they want our own creative to go to court or to the tribunal and fight for uses that are made without their permission, without their knowledge, that's what they want, and we can't allow them. Because as I said previously, and I've said this before, eh, if we're going to allow a situation where someone is, with all the money that they have in the world, decide that boona, they want to use someone's work, Messi Pakela's work, without permission, they can do that if you introduce fair. Because what they want to do is to keep you in court, and they can. And if the court finds that you've actually infringed as a big tech company, our court doesn't have a punitive damages system. What you are going to get is what you would have been paid had you given consent. So if na be yengavuma, ekali, lebarin so ito na idio money, eh, right? There's no disincentive. If I have the money, I'm a big tech company, I, I run a company that is trillions of US dollars, I will keep you in court for as long as I can, because I have the money. So those that are pushing for fair use are not, I've said this, and I, I hope they don't take it the wrong way, they are being disingenuous, they are honestly being disingenuous. Because as a creative, it's like saying to someone else, ya ngalulimitama rights arm. No one can do that, you have an exclusive right. Fair use is an exception to your exclusive right. How do you as a creative decide to manage, I must actually agree to someone limiting my rights? Chances are, you are going to fight to stop people limiting your rights. But we find that those that are proponents of fair use, that are also creative, are saying the contrary, I mean, I, I just, to me, it boggles the mind. But most importantly, the point I wanted to make was there is section thirteen of the current act. And I would ask, good legislature, if they relion, look at that section. Because that section could have been amended then, so that it allows for a proper introduction of other exceptions. But no, they want fair use because anyone can just use and then argue in court whether it is fair. So that's the first thing, the second one that I would ask, when we look at standard contract and that section dealing with, it, it amends chair, section thirty-nine, which deals with minister's power to regulate. Now, if it was limited to just performers and producers, that probably some people may say, yeah, even there, you still don't want it, but it is broad. So it, the minister can essentially prescribe contractual terms between us and digital service providers. Because it relates to rights that are in the act. They can prescribe, the minister can wake up and prescribe contractual terms that affect distributor with another distributor, because it relates to the rights in. So I'm saying, if you are going to come up with minimum standards, maybe that, if you want to say it is minimum standard, maybe say that, even then, there may be a race to the bottom, I've said this before. Once you create a minimum, what happens is that people tend to stick to the minimum and forget to go to, it was meant as a minimum. So avoid a race to the bottom. Let's come up with practical, fit-for-purpose legislation. I know I've, I've, I've spoken longer than I should, I've made my own submissions at various places. And often I allow, when I attended the meeting, I allowed the people within the province to raise their issues because some of us are fortunate, I'm able to drive, I was in Putari Charba, the last week I was in Zanning, I went. So, and the reason, there was a question that was asked, why do we do this? Some of us do it precisely because it is fatal. Some of the provisions, and that's why we are saying remove them from the bill, they are fatal to the creative industry. They will destroy, in fact, the publishing sector, the book publishing sector, I'm sure they've made a submission. It will destroy the book publishing sector. Some of these provisions, the broad exceptions, will destroy those sectors. And we are saying, let's look at our own country, we are a developing country. Fair use, there are less than ten countries that have introduced fair use. No one is running to introduce fair use because it is innovative. America is not innovative because of fair use, guys, let's be honest. It is not innovative because of fair use, it's probably innovate in spite of fair use, right? So, and the ones that have recently introduced fair use are not more creative or innovative than South Africa. And let them come with examples, and let's compare, let them say, hey, Nigeria is fair dealing by the way. Let them say, there's a, there's Ghana, there's Israel, Israel has adopted fair use in its totality. Then let's look at whether that country is more innovative than South Africa. Because then you are looking at your own country, you are not influenced by big tech that actually we should introduce fair use, which we know is going to be detrimental to us because we don't have punitive damages, right? Because big tech is going to use, they're doing it now with AI. They're using copyrighted material for these algorithms to learn. And no one knows whose copyright is being used, no one is being paid for that copyright, they're just using it. And they know they can keep someone, even in the US, they can keep them in mode for as long as possible, they have the money. Why as the one percent, we are less than one percent of the global market when it comes to the creative economy? Why do we want to do that? Because essentially, we are destroying our own creative. Nklugibe ga na po che.
No parliament is in session. Eh, I'm not sure whether you want to take something or before I summarize. Eh, there's been very heated debates, eh, this, nklung, unga, unga, yes, fale. Eh, there's something right we are doing to do wrong. We are very good at that, and we must find a way to deal with that. But eh, let me allow, I'm not sure you wanna take, from arts and culture, you want to say something? After, if I push up now, okay.
Alright, eh, thank you, Nklangla, for more explanation about the fair use. Eh, I think earlier on, when I stood up here, I said, I know nothing about fair use, but I can talk about fair dealing because our, our industry has been under fair dealing for the past, you know, donkey years. And artists, South African artists were exploited and abused under the fair dealing. Eh, if we can maybe introduce fair and justice systems to cover and protect the right of South African artists, then maybe we'll be talking. Eh, there's one thing that I wanted to align to, eh, um, Mr. Roder. Mr. Roder, this bill was there whilst you were eh, one of the officials of a union, which is SIFSA. And most unfortunately, eh, this bill was sitting in parliament in, 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 before this president, and you did absolutely nothing about it whilst you were in power, we, or in a position to do, to do that. And it, it surprises me that i uma fulo fulo gaji ko. Eh, but the other thing, secondly, eh, I've been moving around with the, this association because they are the ones who are giving me a platform. Otherwise, my, my, my leader, eh, Nklangla, who is one of, of our leaders in, in music industry council, does not even look at me. You know, he only looks at me when there is need for me to protect his right to earn from where he is working. Eh, because that's exactly what he is doing, he was protecting his right to earn. Because he is earning as a lawyer, he is earning as, as, as a worker at, at, at one of the collecting societies. Okay, no, 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 it's not, no, no, it's not, it's not, it's not a personal attack. You've, you've made mention of mine, so I also have a right to make mention of your names. He, he even said, can I just finish, can I just finish?
You're going to, can I, can I, can I run the house?
Okay.
Yeah, can I run the house? I'm, I'm actually protecting you to finish. I, I've, I've observed a discontent. And whilst others were speaking, there was still discontent, I'm going to address that. But I want to allow you to speak, you, you experiencing parliament first time, I do all the time. There's always heated debates, and people say a nice thing about you in your face, and sometimes you get worked up, you are not supposed to win a dialogue. But eh, can we allow her to finish, and then I will, I'll, I'll raise issues that I picked up as an, an toward in terms of engagement, normal decent engagement will come there. You've been doing personal attacks, rights, left, right, and center here. I understand you are not in parliament, you don't understand the rules. You are right to express as raw as you is, you will protect those rights. Copyright, that's copyright, is abuse, see.
Alright, and the other thing, eh, eh, I'd actually wanted to, to correct, I want to give you an education, a free education about eh, eh, a relationship between a writer and a performer. You know, if you are a first performer of a song, even if it is written by someone else, you, you automatically, the, the one who branded the song, I will talk especially about Ayachi Samategi, I branded the song, I'm entitled to earning of royalties and part of copyright, I am entitled to do the reproduction of that work because I have branded this song. Thank you.
I'm a rukachis a bit. No, eh, I want to thank you for, for being this free, for, for expressing your views, however way you did it. Look, the essence of democracy is for people to express their views. The ultimate end is to come to a conclusion. In a decent society, you're mindful of what you say, you don't have to be told. Je, ubuntu ba kuma say to you, if, if I say this to someone else, I will accept it if it is said to me as way. Or you don't say things you don't want to be said to you, that's in a decent society. Now, if you say things, and when they are retaliated, you get offended, ubanwena. No one is bigger than anyone, we are equal in the eyes of the law, the constitution says that. So all of us are equal, so don't think your views are superior than other person's views. You don't decide that shift, you don't. In a democracy, you express your views, you must have a decency to listen to other's. That's why we sit at here, members of parliament, from different political parties. We talk, we shake hands. We talk, we shake hands, we laugh, we get into parliament. It becomes a completely different animal. Things we say against each other in parliament. You would not think we sit like this in some. We say those things when we go to tea or breakfast together. We don't even think, oh, eh, said something about me, some sort of, not in South Africa. Somewhere else, yes, they do it. Somewhere else, they're intolerant. Tina, we have democrats in South Africa, we have freedom. We appreciate that freedom did not come free. People died for us to have freedom. And we must applaud and appreciate. When I started the meeting, I said, yesterday we're celebrating 29 years of first democratic government in South Africa. We must appreciate that. So your engagement, your engagement, heated as they are, for me personally, I like that. This is what I fought for. I fought for you to express your views freely. That's what we want. Do it in a respectful manner, yes. Now, I said there's something we are doing right to do wrong. We are quick to judge each other. We are quick to do so. I'm not sure it's an issue of arrogance or inferiority of just someone was slander. I don't know what informs that. But we are a nation in the making. And you must do that. We are here as a portfolio committee dealing with two bills. It's not in Bezo. It's not in Bezo. In an Bezo, which your department must convey, look, this is how government works. There's executive, which is the premier in the MECS is called executive. It's another arm of government. There's parliament, which is a, another arm of parliament. And then there's judiciary. There's judiciary. So government is three legs. It's judiciary, it's executive, it's, it's parliament. They are independent. However, they are interdependent. So the executive account to us. We don't count, account to executive. Someone said, no, you are useless. We're going to ask the premier to disband you. And I'm like, chief. You don't account to the premier. We're not created by the premier. He can disband this executive, not us. He accounts to us as legislator. But it's part of education we must continue to. And we will do it as well. So slap and go. See, we are learning views, Zenu. We are one country, South Africa. Let's protect them. Let's advocate to them. Let's allow all of us to express our views freely everywhere in the country. You know, this is a continuous debate in the country. I picked up some, some few weeks' bag that Western Cape wants independence from South Africa. They want independence from South Africa. You all, you already know Dorania. There's no Dorania, they've got their own currency. It works only in Dorania. Can't be exchanged anywhere. Don't know how it works. Just don't disintegrate this country. We are unitaristic. Your engagement and our engagement, upon Pumakona, siné antagonistic and unantagonistic engagement. Isn't it? The unantagonistic. As the unantagonistic is engagements where you can speak to each other and then freely, you don't agree, like, we don't agree in terms of posture, you can't. We don't agree, no honourable member, cloute, we don't agree, no honourable member, uh, ubabu. They don't agree with me, no messaras, Pumakwencii. So we're engaging in an unantagonistic engagement. As antagonistic in Kiliashak. So however heated we get, we understand, we still have to live together. So, neze nu, en ibena zo apas, they are fine, but my plea is that don't dis, stop disint integrating this country. We are one nation. All your views are acceptable, all of you must speak. And we will get different views from different people. Allow that. If people say things like, subahite, summa, toalangepru. Allow them to say those things that are palatable. That's part of being democrat. So people na gutu and je things that makes you hate you. Are you Omalii? You won't be loved by everybody. How long you are, you won't be hated by everybody. Allow a space where you interact and relate with people on the basis of respect. I was closing and I asked you, wanted to say something. I see you raising your hand, you, you allowed. Your department was attacked left, right and center. That by artists and we go everywhere we go, that's why we asked him to come. Everywhere you go, instead of engaging on the issues we bring, people are engaging us on the department. And that's why we requested you, because we don't want those things to fall aside. We want you to capture them and take them to the department. Because sinasi zuzisa, sinasi zelezi too. So he's here and, and now there's an expression here, distear. I think we, we must get this distear as well to be, to be part of our sessions, even though we, we only left with one in Mangalo. But we can still make one. So we'll get this steer there. So that they also listen. But you've heard, they need, you can speak. They need an in Bezo. Talk to your department. Artists want to talk. Create a platform for them to speak. They're okay to tell us, we're to get off now. We want them to speak about the bill. Because we are not creating platforms for them to speak issues they are raising. So they are okay to tell us where to get off.
Thank you, Chair. And apologies that I didn't acknowledge you the first time when you asked me to speak. I appreciate that. Colleagues and, shall I say, colleagues in the arts, listening to, to your pain and to your plight, various plights here. You know, it's, it's painful for me to hear that. And I'm on the other side of the fence in government. And I acknowledge to say, we can, we can do, we can definitely do more with the little we have. I agree also with the chair to say, I think we need more in Bezos, more platforms where you can express your thoughts, your frustration, your anger and your love for the arts also. But also to, to view your thoughts, because this is, this is a platform to view your thoughts, specifically on the copyright book. But I'm grateful that you've raised so many issues. It's, it's difficult for me to, to start and end at a specific point because I've made 21 pages of notes. And be assured that I will summarize those notes and I will discuss them with our superiors in the department so that we can come up with strategies and plans to see how we can assist. I think it's also important for you to realize where I'm coming from or where, where the department is coming from. And members of, of the legislature, you're welcome to correct me if I'm wrong. But the national budget is, is captured based on population per province. And the reason why the three state province, the budget is so small compared to other provinces is because of the numbers. That is, that is one filter that is used by government to determine budgets in the various provinces. Then it is also important to note, and by, by saying this, I'm not negative, please you not think that. I'm just realistic to say, you all know we have the she departments. And the reason why the she department is so heavily funded is because that is where the major priorities of government lies. Social development, education, health, those are the ones, you know, that are heavily funded. So in saying that, that is not negative, that is realistic. Arts and culture or cultural affairs is far from those budgets because it's not one of those high priorities. But that is where we creatives now need to get creative. For example, if you're a theater person and you know the major budgets lie with health, with social development and education, then you must create a show that can be taken on the road that deals with health issues. We've done that with HIV and AIDS and we will continue with that as artists. But you must find new ways of creating shows and creating awareness on health issues, similar on education issues, similar on social development issues. Then you engage those departments and you say to them, I've got a product. Although I'm an artist, don't, don't send me to Barry. Listen to what I'm saying. I'm saying, I'm an artist, but I have a product that you at education need, that you at health need, that you at social development need. And then they will pay from those exuberant budget, sorry for the word exuberant, but the large budgets that they have. They will engage with you and they will pay you accordingly if it adds value to their programs. So one must think outside the box and, and maybe not only focus on, on the department of sport, arts, culture and recreation. But remember also government was also very creative to say, okay, we realize we can't allocate so much money towards sport, arts, culture and recreation. But we have the lotto. We created the Mzansi Golden Economy Fund. There's a Motsepe Foundation that also funds arts, not just sport. So you guys are very welcome to email me. I'll give my email address. And then I can share those funding bodies and the details with you because we might not have all the answers, but we can work together to see how you guys can benefit from that. And what the, there was something else. More, I'm, I'm more or less done. Yes, thank you, Chair. But let me give you my email address. And, and then if you have a proposal that we cannot fund, for example, or assist with, I am more than happy to assist you with a recommendation letter that you can add to your portfolio from our side to assist you with your funding application. My email address, SACR, which is short for Sport, Arts, Culture and Recreation. And then my name Barry, B A R R Y, at gmail dot com. And I'm specifically giving the Gmail because sometimes proposals on a government email does not go through because proposals are bigger than two megabytes. So SACRbarry@gmail.com. Thank you very much. Thanks, Jay. It's all one word, lowercase in one word. Thank you.
No, thanks. Food is ready, has been ready for a while. We're going to ask you as you leave, you go past that table and get yourself lunchbox and go home. But thank you very much from the bottom of my heart that we had such a beautiful crowd. Difficult as a Zana post Velakona, so it's quick to say, go ba, ogoa thona, go to Velakauti. And there's nothing wrong with Velakauti still. But get your food and then our last leg, Tina, is in Bloomingdale. As we're saying, we will summarize. We're going to write a report as well with your views and what we think. We're going to discuss as well to say, this is the free state position. And so your influence and your views will matter also as you write on the emails we gave. So that remember you lobby. And when you lobby, you say something many times. Even though normally other people abuse that, and to maxuti, a lie told many times becomes true. So you must say these things that are right in your case many times so that we, we drill them in our heads and they become us. That's why I said the answer. Section 12, Safuna Indo, i, i research. It was said to me many times and I've got a different perspective. Here's section 12, be fair use. So it means I must go and enhance my knowledge over and above what you are telling me. So thank you very much. God bless you. Let's get and go home.